Mr. Mayor, it is now 5:30.
Thank you very much, Madam Clerk. Good evening, everybody, and welcome to the special city council meeting this Monday evening, March 21st. I'm going to call this meeting to order. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Councilmember Rodriguez.
Here.
Councilmember Gothols.
Here.
Councilmember Lee.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Pappan.
Here.
Thank you. And Mayor Bonilla.
Here. Thank you very much, Madam Clerk. Now I'm going to read the special reminder regarding the health orders that were put in place regarding COVID. Due to the health orders in place at this time, we are holding meetings remotely. This motion on how to provide public comment is explained at the bottom of each published agenda. When public comment is announced for the item, you wish to comment on, use the raise your hand feature in Zoom, and you will be called on at the appropriate time. If calling in via telephone, press star nine to raise your hand, and when called upon, press star six to unmute. These options for public comment will remain available until I close the public comment period for that specific item. So at this point, our first item for tonight's meeting is a closed session. I'm going to call for public comment on this item, which is a closed session on existing litigation as a workers' compensation claim. Is there any public comment, Madam Clerk?
If you want public comment, please raise your hand on this item. Mr. Mayor, I see no hands raised.
Very good. Then I will close public comment, and we will now adjourn to the closed session, and we'll be returning shortly, maybe 10 minutes or so. Thank you very much. Okay, welcome back, everybody. Looks like, yeah, I think we're all here. Except maybe Councilmember Lee. Let's give her one minute. Well, let's get started then. Item number two is the 400 East Fifth Avenue parking garage, and we're going to be talking about the name of the parking garage, and I think we have Kathy Kleinbaum here to present on this.
Can everybody see my screen?
Yes.
Let me get into presentation mode.
Perfect, thank you.
I have a very, very brief presentation for you today. Sorry, I'm having tiniest technical difficulty there. Okay, wonderful. So as you are well aware, construction is now underway on our new downtown garage, which is located along Fifth Avenue between Railroad Avenue and Claremont. This garage is being developed through a public-private partnership with Midpin Housing, and also includes the development of 225 affordable housing units on the adjacent parcel. Construction started on the garage in January and is anticipated to be completed by April 2023. Due to supply chain issues, materials for the garage need to be ordered well in advance in of their actual installation date to make sure that they're available when needed. As a result, Midpin Housing has asked the city to finalize the name of the garage so they can order the signage needed for the exterior of the garage. So during the entitlement process, the city referred to the garage as the Fifth Avenue Garage due to the location of where the vehicle ingress and egress is for the garage. During the entitlement hearing, members of the community, specifically from the central neighborhood, expressed some concerns about possible increased traffic on Fifth Avenue due to the garage name. So just as a frame of reference, the name that the city had come up with really related to the traditional names that have been used for city garages in the past, which include such creative titles such as the Second and El Camino Garage or the Main Street Garage. Most of the garages we have are named either after their location or an adjacent feature such as the transit center. So given these types of naming systems, staff has come up with a few alternative suggestions for the name of the garage for city council consideration, but of course, we're open to any other suggestions that the council may have. So some of these suggestions include the southeast garage because this garage is located in the southeast corner of downtown, the Railroad Avenue Garage, since it's along Railroad Avenue, Fifth and Railroad, which maybe de-emphasizes the Fifth Avenue portion, and Kikku Garage because it's adjacent to the Kikku Crossing Affordable Housing. So these are just there as suggestions, but as I open it up for discussion, I'm interested to hear what the council has in mind. And that's the end of my presentation. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Kathy. You were right. Oh, I went away. Am I still here?
Please see you and hear you.
Yeah, okay, I can't see, so let me hold on, let me get back in here. I need to, oh, here it is. There it is, right there. Thank you all very much. Okay, so before I send it off to council, let me first compliment you on the imagery you were using in the opening of this presentation. It's really, you've really improved the quality of those images you're presenting there. That's great. And I want to say that the city council has a tough task tonight looking at naming of this garage, so go ahead and let's hear your comments or your questions if you have. Okay, then I'll suggest, since nobody else is speaking, how about the Fifth Avenue Garage? It seems to indicate the location, make it easier to find. I think it makes a lot of sense.
Should we hear from the public first, Mr. Mayor?
No. Okay, well, let's hear from the public.
Mr. Mayor, I have one hand raised right now. If I could have Lisa Diaz Nash, please go ahead.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and city staff and council members. My name is Lisa Diaz Nash. I'm on the library board, but I'm acting as a private citizen. I would like to strongly urge the council to consider naming the garage the Kikku Garage in alignment with Kikku Crossing and also in recognition of the Asian heritage in our city. I think that would be a wonderful thing, as well as de-emphasizing the Fifth Avenue and the traffic aspects. And in future, I would also just like to put in an additional request that there is special focus on putting in speed humps on Fifth Avenue to try and lessen the traffic and much better signage coming in and out of the garage, particularly for trucks to try and gear them away from Fifth Avenue and taking a look at traffic circles along the route. But certainly in terms of the name, I would like to recommend Kikku Garage is the name of the garage. Thank you very much.
Next speaker.
Anybody else?
Next speaker is Lori Watanuki.
Good evening, Mayor Bonilla and members of the city council. My name is Lori Watanuki, and I would also like to second the comments that Lisa just made, and we would like the name Kikku Garage or Kikku Central Garage. Kikku refers to the chrysanthemum flower in Japanese history of the chrysanthemum growers in Samatelle County. I do want to add that we did make this request formally because we think that the name Fifth Avenue Garage would mark trucks and traffic down Fifth Avenue. But further guidance is needed with directional signage from 101 to take Third South Claremont to the garage and going to 101 by taking Claremont to Fourth or South Claremont to Ninth to El Camino. Now, signage alone has not been a deterrent for the large trucks, especially with this new construction going on. And it's taken a while, but we've been working through some issues with these construction trucks, and I hope that the truck situation and the construction will be resolved. Now, truck drivers generally use Waze or Google Maps, and as a result, what they do is they really just plow through. So we would like to have physical devices which would help our situation. We would like your consideration for the name change to Kikku Garage. Those are my comments for this evening. Thank you so much.
Mr. Mayor, I have no other hands raised.
You're on mute, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you very much. Go ahead, Councilmember Rodriguez.
Thank you. I just had a question, and I'm not super optimistic you'll know the answer to this, but I thought I'd ask it anyway. Do we have any idea of how our residents find these garages and if the name of the garage helps them find the garage? Or like, I guess, I guess what I'm trying to, I like the name Kikku as a garage, but I don't want to name the garage something that doesn't, that doesn't help somebody find it if they need to find it. So I guess I would love to hear if you've done any research into that, if you have any thoughts just in your experience working with these.
So I have not done research. I'm not sure how we would know sort of perhaps having a survey to the public, but I would say that the name of the garage does play a role in people identifying where the garage is located and which garage they want to choose to park in based on where their destination is. It certainly, I know for when we are selling permits for the garages, I think it helps people determine which garage it is that they would prefer to have their permit located in. But that is anecdotal, obviously.
That's what I was expecting. Another question I have is how do we have like preferred entryway, like the preferred routes that we expect people to take to get to, to get to the entrances? And the reason I bring this up is because I think the only thing worse than, I guess, everybody going to Fifth Avenue to overcrowding it to get to the garage is everybody trying to go everywhere else and trying to find the, circling around to try to find how to get there. And so I'm wondering, like, is, how much of a bad thing is it if people do take Fifth Avenue to get there?
So I'm pretty sure that people will likely use Google Maps or Waze or whatever they're using if they're unfamiliar with the downtown to route themselves to the garage, and if they are familiar with downtown, I'm sure they'll take the path that is the most convenient for them. So it is, it would be hard to control where people drive short of, you know, traffic barriers or prohibiting them from using certain streets. Hopefully that answers your question.
Yeah, I guess it does. It just doesn't help much, but I appreciate that effort. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Other council members? Go ahead, Councilmember Gothols.
So my question, Kathy, is about the name of the surface lot currently. What is it?
We referred to that lot where the garage is going is the Workers' Resource Center lot, and since the Workers' Resource Center has been relocated now to Ample, it would probably be confusing if you were to use the same name. And then the lot where Kikku Crossing, the housing needs to refer to is the Kinko's Lot because once upon a time before my time in Samatelle.
I went to that Kinko's. I went to that Kinko's. Okay, so that's not particularly helpful either. I have, I have a couple of thoughts. So I like Kikku. I think Kikku will identify it as a specific lot so that people can talk to each other about what lot they are parking in, and if you're trying to give somebody directions and you're saying park in the Kikku Lot. But I think that it also needs to signify two other things. One, I'd love to have the name include downtown because I want us to be expanding our idea of what downtown is. And Kathy, when you were just talking about it, you were talking about it as one of the downtown lots. And two, especially if we're going to name it Kikku, we should, we should throw public in the title of the garage so that people know that it's for everybody and not specific for just the residents of Kik. I guess what I'm getting at is, I mean, I considered other things. I considered naming it the Sue Lempert or Lempert Family Downtown Garage, but I do like the idea of signifying it as where it is next to the Kikku Housing Project. Number two, expanding it as downtown, one of the downtown lots. And three, making sure that people understand that this is public parking that everybody can use. So whether it's Kikku Downtown Public or Kikku Public Downtown, I'm sure that a few years from now, we will all be shortening it to one word or two words, but I think that in naming this garage, explaining to people that it's public for everybody, that it's downtown, and this is the specific downtown lot that you're referring to is what should go into the title. Those are my thoughts.
Thank you very much. Any other council member? Go ahead, Councilwoman Lee.
Thank you. I was just doing a cursory Google search on the garages downtown, and they actually are very hard to differentiate what's a private lot and what is a public lot. And so I think that Councilmember Gothols' idea of having the word public in there is a really good one. And I was, I was also reflecting on the, you know, the work that we, that went into pulling off the affordable housing project development and the intention in the naming of it and the significance of honoring the Japanese-American history. And I don't know if that will, if we name just the housing project after Kikku, I don't know if it'll be as widely understood or acknowledged than if we were to go a step further and use the name in the garage space. And it inspires conversation and questions like, what does Kikku mean? Why do we name it Kikku? And I've already gotten a number of those questions. And so I think that it's a, it's a good question to have out there, and we have a really meaningful answer to provide the community. And so I like the idea of going in that direction. So I would second the points and suggestions from Councilmember Gothols.
Okay, thank you.
Great. Can I jump in one more second?
Sure, go ahead.
Kathy, do we already approve the art on the side of the parking structure?
I know the artist was present at the groundbreaking. I can speak to that.
So we've selected a Japanese artist, and she is moving forward with her design. She, in her own words, she says it's about 85% approved and finalized, and it is very referential to Japanese patterns and textiles, and so I think.
And the chrysanthemum?
And the chrysanthemum.
Can everybody say chrysanthemum? Can we, everybody try to say it?
One, two, three, chrysanthemum.
So yes, so there will be, as, you know, we can't, I don't think that that part of the 15% unknown will change the positioning and inclusion of the chrysanthemum. So yes, there will be a giant chrysanthemum on the side of the building.
That was the question. That was the question, and you have answered it in the affirmative, so thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
With a 15% margin of error.
Okay, and Deputy Mayor Pappan, please. Oh, can't hear you. There you go.
I didn't have my hand up.
Okay, no comments. Thank you very much. Then I would like to add that I think my opinion has been swayed by some of what I've heard, and I actually do appreciate the idea that the word Kikku would be appropriate to have there, and I was kicking around ideas thinking that it should be something like the Kikku Fifth Avenue Public Garage, which is a long name, but it kind of fills the bill for everything that everybody spoke about. That's my thinking. Unless somebody has a shorter name that is more favored by other council members, that's the one I like for now.
I like Kikku Public Downtown, but I'm amenable to the majority.
I like, I like the, I like to keep the Fifth Avenue in there so people actually have, like the other garages, some idea where it's located.
Don't we have multiple garages on Fifth Avenue?
Well, the other one's called the Tennis Court Parking Garage. And the other one is called the, what is that? The, it's the Talbot's Lot. It's the, no, it's the Ravioli House Lot. That's what that one's called, I think. It's parking lot L or M or something like that, too.
I had a question.
Go ahead.
I just had a question. I'm liking where we're going with this. I think it's probably going to be preferred as the Kikku Lot anyway, colloquial, but I'm wondering, is it too, is having those three words, is that too long for it, or would that work?
Well, I think it has that word garage there, too. Kikku Public Downtown Garage. Joe, is that what it should be?
Uh, yeah, Kikku Public Downtown Garage, but go ahead, Kathy, I'm sorry.
Sorry. So there'll be two signs, sorry, that are on the garage. One will be the sign that has the variable parking count that you, we've now implemented in all our other garages. For that one, there's very limited space for name, so it'll probably just say like Kikku Garage, but the sign that's like a plate on the front of the garage, that one can have however many characters you want. Write a paragraph.
That works for me, I think. I agree with Councilmember Gothols' suggestion.
Are we able to determine what it will be called on Google? I guess I care more about what it's called on Google. If it's, if on Google it is called the Kikku Public Downtown Garage, when people are searching for where to park when they go downtown, it will encourage people to park off-street, which is part of the point here.
I unfortunately don't know the answer to that.
Well, then that's why we have Jennifer Chen. She can take care of things. Well, then that's why we have Jennifer Chen. She can take care of things like, like that for us. And she'll just tell Google, this is what you need to call it so that people park there.
Yeah, yeah. If she ever gets beyond the robot that answers the phone. Thank you very much. You know, I like what you just said, though. I think the Kiku Public Downtown Garage works for me. And, uh, Kathy, what you said about on the actual electronic sign, it would just say Kiku Garage. I think that's also funny.
Kathy, would you mind bringing up the first, um, slide with the groundbreaking picture?
Absolutely. Sorry, small.
Yeah. Well, I just wanted to commend, um, Mayor Bonilla for your excellent form with your shoveling. So your shoveling technique is quite remarkable and a standout among all of us.
And I want to say the rest of you did really good at modeling after me. Thank you.
Well, I'm happy with where we're going.
Uh, I have shoveled a million shovelfuls, so. Uh, yes. Any other comments? Uh, are we all settled on Kiku Public Downtown Garage? Sounds like we are. I'm not seeing anybody else indicating they'd like to speak. So with that said, Kathy, do you have everything you need for that?
Yes, thank you very much.
Okay, thank you very much. And now we will move on to item three, which is the Commercial Vacancy Policy Review. And I think we have Jennifer Chen to help us with that.
We do. One second, two, I'm going to speak.
She was busy. She was on the phone with Google.
I certainly feel very confident. I wish I could have the overlord's at Google to see what we want.
Jennifer, I have a problem. You sound like you're kind of underwater.
Yeah, your, your sound is garbled.
Is that any better?
Yes.
Great. Uh, good evening, Mayor and council members. I'm Jennifer Chen, the city's Urban Development Manager. The item for you tonight is the Commercial Vacancy Policy Review.
Jennifer, you're still.
Yeah, the sound isn't particularly good.
Yeah.
Kind of sound like you're underwater.
Jennifer, could you try using a headset?
Is that better?
Yes.
Yeah, that sounds better. Yeah.
All right. Sorry about that. So, um, as a review, just kind of reminding council why we are here tonight. So, uh, this is actually the fourth item in some relation, in some way about this topic. In October of twenty twenty, City Council noted an increase in downtown vacancies and requested a study session to discuss the site and development standards for commercial tenants and range of allowable uses in the central business district. Staff came back on February first, twenty twenty-one, where council received an update on allowable downtown uses and an overview of the stakeholder outreach that was provided, that was done by staff. Additional information on vacancies and allowable uses and, and community feedback on downtown activity and vibrancy was requested by City Council. On October eighteenth, twenty twenty-one, City Council received an update on downtown retail vacancies, allowable ground for uses in the downtown core, and an overview of a community survey about downtown vibrancy and activity. At the, at the end of that meeting, council directed staff to review policies in neighboring cities that have used to discourage commercial vacancies in ground for vacant retail sites. So tonight, the study session topic will be an update on the downtown vacancy rate and, uh, announcements of a few new occupancies in downtown core and a review of the policy options related to vacancy taxes, vacancy registration and policy and pop-up retail. So staff updated a vacancy report that was created last September. And the real change in the activity in our downtown was that there were two new active storefronts looking for tenants. Many of the tenants that were identified that had active, that had, many of the storefronts that were vacant but had an active tenant identified had actually now, are now actually in, uh, construction where you can see their sign. So between September twenty twenty-one and February, the vacancy only increased by two storefronts. I do want to iterate that the vacancies in downtown is dynamic and changing. These are, for example, the downtown new businesses that will be opening soon. One as soon as this Friday, De Ho, during lunch hours, which you got, which the entire city council has been invited to. And if you walk around the downtown, you'll see the signs for these businesses. And there are various stages of construction and closeness to opening. So vacancy taxes. The city of San Francisco and Oakland passed vacancy tax in twenty twenty and twenty eighteen, respectively. The city of, of San Francisco's commercial vacancy tax is based on storefront linear feet and only applies for commercial properties that have been vacant for more than six months. Oakland's vacancy tax applies for residential, commercial, and undeveloped or raw land parcels that have been vacant for more than fifty days a calendar year. Uh, as a reminder, before a vacancy tax can be implemented and must be approved by the voters. Uh, I, we had done some analysis on the reception of a vacancy tax once they've been passed. The property owners in San Francisco and in Oakland felt that the vacancy tax is very unfriendly and unfair to them and unfairly burdens them for something that's out of their control. Commercial brokers have stated they have not seen expedited leasing of vacant properties or lower landlord expectations of lease rates based on the passing of these vacancy taxes. And in general, the retail market for small goods is weak due to the increasing availability of e-commerce platforms and shifting of shopper behavior online. Therefore, there are less demand for brick and mortar stores. Oakland's initial rollout of the vacancy tax created mass confusion and outrage, and people flooded city council meetings for protests. Therefore, Oakland created a list of ten exemptions that reduced or eliminated the vacancy tax parcel, the taxes for over sixty percent of the parcels in Oakland. If council is interested in pursuing a vacancy tax, the earliest timing would be November twenty twenty-four due to the necessary staff groundwork to have, to have that implemented and brought forth upon the voters for them to review. A vacancy registration is a city program and it's not a tax and does not require voter approval. In May of twenty eighteen, the city of San Jose approved a neglected vacant or abandoned building in storefront mandatory registration program. Property owners self-register buildings and storefronts that have been unused for more than thirty days. The program is managed by the city's Code Enforcement Division. Fees collected are used for administrative services such as proactive and complaint-based inspections and overseeing the program appeals and hearing process. After city of San, of San Jose implemented a program, um, for eighteen months, the city decided to not expand the program. They did so because staff did not find the program to be significant catalyst in reducing, in teneting long-term vacant storefronts or reducing vacancies. Staff did find that the frequent monitoring of vacant sites and buildings deterred urban blight, crime, and decay in proactive and comprehensive and timely way. There will be a need to have additional code enforcement officer to implement the program if council is interested. Additionally, if council is interested in this program, staff would draft an ordinance for city council approval and it would be effective thirty days after council approval. And finally, at the last council meeting, council asked, uh, the possibility of pop-up retail and asked staff to review if such a, if there's anything, uh, in the city municipal code that prohibits pop-up retail. As a reminder, pop-up retailers is a retail store that has, that is open for a short time to take advantage of a trend. For example, the Halloween spirit stores are a typical pop-up retail store that opens, uh, every year about four months before, three, four months before Halloween. But staff confirmed that existing city policies do not discourage or prohibit the ability of property owners to allow for pop-up retail in vacant storefronts. A pop-up retailer would only need a city business tax license if the use is allowed under current zoning. Financial or functional changes to space could require a building permit review if they decide to do, um, something different than what's there already. And then depending on the type of business, a pop-up retailer may require other county and state permits. For example, if it was a food use, it would acquire health code, um, health permits per county. So the analysis of the pop-up retail is that it can be, it can really add to, to a sick value, having a bustling pop-up business if the landlord wants to track possible new users for vacant site. However, landlords are concerned that it may be difficult to uh, tenant a long-term, if a long-term tenant comes, uh, signs up for their, for their vacant storefront. If a tenant, the pop-up user refuses to vacate, then the landlord loses out on, on the opportunity of signing a long-term tenant. As that these leases are private leases, uh, between two parties, the cities cannot, the city cannot play a direct role in creating, in creating a pop-up, uh, retail. But we can definitely facilitate by, um, sharing information on known vacant locations for pop-up retailers to explore. And also encouraging landlords to list their locations online such as, online such as storefront and pop-up shops, which are two common online shops for users to seek pop-up storefronts. So my final slide is, uh, how does council want to proceed? Is there interest in commercial vacancy tax? Is there interest in commercial vacancy registration? Does council want to revisit their commercial vacancy rate in nine to twelve months?
Thank you very much, Jennifer. So let me bring it back to the council here. Who would like to be the first council member to ask questions? I see Diane Pappen's hand is raised.
So thank you so much, Jennifer, for putting all this together. I guess my question is, did you get a read on why, uh, there have been vacancies that there have been from those uh, twenty particular sites? I guess eighteen are still vacant. Um, my concern is this either tax or registry is, is punitive. Um, and the conduct itself might not be intentional, could be a function of various market forces that, that
Yeah.
is just having a hard time. So do we know why people aren't renting?
There are, there's assortment of reasons. Sometimes the site itself needs more work. Um, for example, one of the longer sites in the downtown was a, a nail salon. And it's a very large nail salon that has two, uh, joint facilities. So it, the way that it's set up is just not, uh, does not, it's not what current businesses want. Um, additionally, with COVID, there's, it's been slow sometimes. So a lot of the, a lot of the tenants, there was a lot of stop and go. I still don't know where the market was or what would be needed and as well as the construction time sometimes are longer. So just because they're actively tenating, tenating, they may actually have a tenant in place. I just don't know about that yet. But they still appear to be vacant. And because I don't know who's coming in, I have put them as still just actively seeking. But I don't know for sure if those hundreds, those twenty sites are all fully vacant.
Thank you very much. Any other council member? Any questions?
Yeah, I do.
Thank you. Go ahead.
When we, I, I, I'm not, I don't recall if this was from the last goal-setting session or before, but I know that we talked about, not necessarily like, like with the downtown storefronts, but also kind of like a, like a blight, um, tax or, or whatever we, however, whatever their, their, their best way to call it is for these, for the, for the empty lots that haven't been developed. Is, is this have any, is this connected with that at all? Or are they completely different things when you were, when you were, when staff was looking into this?
Um, I believe code enforcement enforces blight on vacant land and, um, and loiter, and basically trash is what you're concerned with, Eric?
No, uh, what I'm concerned with is like the, the last, um, the last of the four corners, um, in our downtown and like on Twentieth and El Camino, that, that, that oddly shaped, um, triangle lot. Um, my concern with, with those is that it's, um, we, we, the situation is that, uh, it, it, somebody can just sit on that, that property paying barely any property taxes for decades in some cases. And, and meanwhile, every Samitean has to drive by it and has to deal with that vacant lot that's usually, um, you know, it's, it's not against code, but it doesn't really look great. And, and it's also, uh, it, we're also losing, um, revenue because it's not being improved. And so it's, it's being taxed at a lower rate. So that, that was actually what I was, what I was more concerned with than, than the actual like vacancies that seem to turn over, um, pretty quickly, like throughout the city for retail vacancies. So, um, I just wanted to know, is that something separately that we're going to be talking about later on sometime in the future? Or is this an offshoot of that conversation?
Really, this is an offshoot of that conversation. Um, Oakland addressed that with the vacancy, with their vacancy tax based on parcels. It's also taxed on vacant and undeveloped land.
Okay, thank you. That's my question.
Thank you. Any other council members with questions? Go ahead, Councilmember Lee.
I also, I'm glad that, um, uh, Councilmember Rodriguez brought that up because that was one of the, um, the interests of mine as well, um, is, is how to, um, incentivize, uh, development of undeveloped land. So, um, I think that that's an important question to fold into this, this conversation um, in terms of how it could be applied in, um, in the tax or in the registry process. Um, and then, and then I guess I have kind of a, a, a question in terms of the scope of, um, of the ordinance because, uh, my, my thought is that we would be applying it citywide and not just in the downtown area. But I can see that, you know, um, Jennifer, you've done a lot of work to track specifically downtown. And I'm, I'm wondering, um, if, I mean, my, I guess my impression is that outside of downtown, that our vacancy rates are higher. And, and, but that's, you know, not data-based. And so I'm curious to hear from your perspective if you feel like there are important differentiations that we should be thinking about in terms of how this ordinance could be applied downtown only or citywide. Um, if you're seeing any important, um, differences between the, the driving causes of vacancy um, in some of the other smaller commercial areas. Um, and then furthermore, I, you know, I think that, so that's part one of my questions. And then part two is, um, you know, is, is if we were to apply it citywide, you know, I think that there are other, um, commercial areas like on Twenty-Fifth Street that have been asking for, um, more, like more enhancements in terms of our, you know, the resources that we designate from our, um, community development department. And, you know, with some of the cleanups or the parking enforcement. So I'm wondering if we were to apply this citywide, you know, how we would think about, um, then redirecting some of those resources equitably across some of the other commercial areas. So those are some of my questions.
So let me just start with, um, overall. I think coming out of COVID, we're still trying to see how the market is settling. Um, I, I, I do see some vacancies across the cities, but I don't see, like, many vacancies, um, in any of our commercial strips. I've driven through all of them. And I don't have specific data because I haven't tracked it. And on the CoStar data that I found, they tend to be on the higher side, but even on the CoStar data that does do city But even on the CoStar data that does do citywide information, San Mateo is at fifteen percent and neighboring cities are higher than fifteen percent. And when you look at the, their core downtowns in those neighboring cities, I would also say their core downtown vacancies are also, there's more of them around than what you see as you walk by San Mateo. That's your first point. On the second point, on how do you sort of encourage development of the land and reuse? I do also wonder if these developers, some of these lands are held because they need to be cleaned up before they can be redeveloped. And they might be just holding on until they have the access to dollars or they have a high enough of a market price where they find it incentive enough so that they can, so they can provide to the next developer. So I, I do think if there are, there are many different reasons why a property has not been developed. One of them is that the site could be dirty. Another one is that they haven't, they might be waiting for our general plan to be completely done and see what the additional allowance could be. And in our different commercial areas, if you, that last part of your question, which is related to how it could be done equitably. I think it depends on how you would structure a tax if you decide to pursue this. On if it would be a special use tax or if it would be a general tax and how you would allocate the taxes. But if it's a vacancy registry, then the fees collected would be used to maintain that registry itself.
Then I just have one follow-up question because I think that when we were, when we were talking about pop-up retail and I, I guess, you know, from your presentation, it sounds like there's nothing preventing that from happening.
Correct.
There on some of the vacant retail lots, there has been in interest from the community, from the community gardening and food sustainability community to have sort of more land options available. And so I'm, I'm just, I'm, I know this is sort of like a different, this is a, a real spin-off from the focus of this conversation, but I'll put, I'll just put it out there that as we, as we hone in on the ideas and maybe focus on the, what mechanism we're looking at in terms of like activating these spaces. Maybe it's not, you know, like I think there's one way to think about the undeveloped land potential for, you know, more events and music spaces and sort of like more dynamic, you know, gathering spaces. And then there's like the inside spaces that might be, you know, better used for, for pop-up or retail or, you know, like having supplies that need, you know, that will need to have, need to be there for a couple of months, right, to, 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 for the business to, to function. So I'm, I guess I, I want to throw it out there in terms of like the, the way that we are worth having this conversation and and specifically elevate the point about how a lot of undeveloped land could have temporary repurpose for, for some of the community gardening interests in this, in San Mateo, which is, which is always at a land deficit and a space deficit.
Very much. Is that, is that it, Councilwoman Lee? Or are those questions?
I think Diane still has her hand up.
Yes, I see that. Deputy Mayor Pappen.
Just a quick question. Did you check in with the chamber as to how they felt about assessing fees to on downtown vacancies?
At their taxes? I, I share with them this is happening. I don't know, I don't know they were, they specifically said either way. Let's share that this item is coming.
Is that it, Diane?
Yeah, I mean, I, I just have a concern. I think we're hurting businesses when they're down. So I am very concerned about vacancy taxes on the downtown sites. I think it's, well, I'll, I'll wait to hear a public comment, but I worry about being punitive at a time that is very precarious for businesses.
Thank you very much. Okay, I think we're ready to move on to public comment. Now I don't really have any questions right now. More comments for later. So Madam Clerk, could we have a public comment, please?
If you'd like to make comment on this item, please raise your hand. I have one hand raised. Mr. Mayor, Mr. John Brook.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, City Council people. My name is John Brook. I live in the city of San Mateo. The, the reason that we see these retail vacancies, as I'm sure we're all aware, is that the internet has changed consumer shopping patterns from going someplace to get something to just clickety-clack having it delivered. The COVID virus is the other thing that's keeping people at home rather than going out to a store to shop. And that's further exacerbating demand for retail shopping space. However, I also believe that these things are starting to unwind now with the loosening of masking restrictions and other restrictions on a public gathering. And my opinion is that retail vacancy tax is trying to solve a problem that's solving itself. I didn't hear anything in the way of specific problem definitions during the meeting. And so it would be easy for someone to assume that the objective of the city was either to punish property owners for keeping their properties vacant or as a ploy to raise a small amount of additional revenue. Either, I think, is a, a bad response to the issue. And my suggestion is to simply step back and let the problem solve itself.
Seeing no other public comments, I think I'll close the public comment period and bring it back to the council. I just want to go ahead and suggest that if members of the public had viewed this subject from the beginning, they would have known that what the council is looking for is a more vibrant downtown storefronts with something happening in the places where more people are able to do some kind of business. And just to have the, the best benefit that the people can get from having a well-activated retail culture in our city. Which I know is counter to internet retail, but we have to deal with it the best we can. That may mean we're looking for other types of uses in some of those retail storefronts. I think we'll get around to that at some point. Councilmember, or Deputy Mayor Pappen, please go ahead.
No, I mean, I would concur, Mr. Mayor. Those are noble goals indeed, and we certainly want those goals. My concern is that, is there an intention of property owners to work against those goals and to penalize them as though that conduct is happening out there? I don't see enough evidence for that and I don't think it's a huge vacancy rate. So me personally, I'm not necessarily on board with getting downtown property owners at this time.
Thank you. Other comments? Other council members?
I can go, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you very much.
So, so I concur with, with Deputy Mayor Pappen. But I do, I do want to follow up on what, what I was saying and what, what Councilmember Lee was, was also, sounded like she was in agreement that I want to make sure that, that we're also going to be talking about the, the underutilized land, especially in our, in very prominent locations. I think that that, that has always been a top priority of mine and, and that's what I think we should be focusing on here. That's my, my opinion. Thanks.
Thank you very much. Next council member?
I agree. I agree. I see things improving. I don't want to penalize anybody. I would like to revisit this. I'm not exactly sure when, given where we are in the year. It might be, it might make sense to revisit this at our priority session in 2023.
Okay. Anybody else? Councilmember Lee, have you commented?
I'll, I'll chime in. I feel, I feel honestly a little bit torn about the timing of this as well. And, and I, there's a part of me that wants to continue to think through the, some of the strategies and move something forward. I'm personally, I'm, I, I'm, I'm more inclined to consider a registry over a tax. Because I think that that will, it's a cleaner mechanism and it, and it actually goes back into the, the community development, like enhancing community development, department staffing that, and work that is really important to do. And we're always talking about how we want Jennifer to be cloned. And this could actually be a way of, of support, not cloning her literally, but, but at least giving her some, some more staff support. So, so for me, it's, there's, there's, maybe there's a middle ground where, where we kind of shelve it until the next priority session and pick it up. Or we consider, you know, pursuing this and honing an idea. And, and then figure out when it makes sense to initiate it and really pull the trigger. There are a lot of fees and, like, for example, parking fees and business licensing fees and, and other such things that we rolled back during the pandemic. And so that is absolutely something that, that we have done and could do. But I think that, you know, I want us to stay committed to, to the course of thinking this through. There are, you know, I can think of the top of my head, you know, there's definitely underutilized vacant land. There's, there's prime, you know, prime real estate that has gone undeveloped for no, 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 no known reason for many, many years. And I think that though, we need to create deterrence for, for those instances because it, it does compromise the experience of our downtown. It does dampen the vibrancy of our downtown. And so, you know, I, I want us to, I, I'm, I hope that we don't lose this idea and the intent behind it. And I'm, I'm wondering if it, you know, if it makes sense to, to schedule it on the next goal-setting session or if council is interested in, in at least workshopping the idea further and figuring out if we can come, move forward with some of the, the programmatic strategies. And then, you know, with, with an acknowledgement that this is not a good time to roll them out. So I'm, I'm curious what other council members think about that.
Okay, Deputy Mayor Pappen, go ahead.
Yeah, I, I mean, I probably wouldn't be interested in it because I kind of feel like if this is something that looks different at the beginning of 2023, why are we applying city resources towards it? So I appreciate the concept of, hey, let's have a TDA. But I also feel like I, I don't want to dedicate resources to something that we may end up not using because the picture looks a whole lot different in 2023.
Okay. Seeing no other hands, I think I'll go ahead. And I think I pretty much agree that right now, given the current retail environment, given the lack of actual change in the vacancies that I see from 2020 to 2021, very little change there. It seems steady, not that it's good. I think that it is an indication that we need to do something more to encourage people to shop locally, which is campaigns. There are campaigns that I have seen going back twenty years, mostly the Chamber of Commerce and now Sam CDA. But most business people understand that if people would be a little more civically minded and shop locally, we could do a lot better. And that would probably eliminate some of the vacant spaces we have right now. And then I do also agree that there are indeed some terminally vacant spots that we've had for decades that we would do well to keep an eye on and contact the owners and try and see if we can help, if we can help bring some uses or some new ideas to what can be done with those sites. I think that would be Jennifer's job to engage in those conversations. I also like the idea of a registry, although I don't need, I don't think we, we necessarily need to do it right now. But what I think registry for me, in my mind, it, it should at least be the rental market that we have for rental housing. The data is needed for that so that we can understand what's going on there and maybe figure out some way to have some sort of gentle regulation there if we can to try and make sure we have the market that's a little bit better than what it is, I think, for people who rent in San Mateo. And that said, I think that we have our people downtown keeping their eyes on things. I do agree Twenty-Fifth Avenue could use a very close look and some help to try and reinvigorate that and Thirty-seventh Avenue for that matter as retail districts. They're both, they've both slipped, I think, pretty far behind the times and they could use some investment. We could certainly see, I think, some better retail activity there if we were to refresh some of that, at least improve facades, make the street sides better, improve the sidewalks, make it friendlier for pedestrians, as we've already done pretty much on Twenty-Fifth. But I'm also looking really down at the area around Forty-second Avenue too, which is one of the study areas for our general plan update. I feel strongly that could be tremendously improved. So these are the kind of things I feel like we could do, but I kind of agree, right now is not the time. We're dealing with issues of recovering from a pandemic. We have difficulties figuring out what to do about internet shopping, but I think we should make that a focus. What can we do about internet shopping? I think I just mentioned some ideas. I think we should actually try to make those stronger efforts to see if we can bring around some change along those lines. But other than that, I think right now, since I see that Oakland and San Francisco are not, I think I read in yesterday's paper, in, in the Sunday paper, it says loophole sinks San Francisco's vacancy tax. Same thing happened in Oakland. San Jose decided with, to withdraw their whole fee structure and just go back to monitoring for code enforcement. And for now, that's probably the best thing. But certainly, I hope every single retailer in San Mateo understands, we are not seeking to punish anybody. We actually want to see improvements in our downtown and that would benefit all retail establishments. So that said, Kathy, do you feel like you have what you need for now?
Yes, thank you.
Great. Thank you very much. Okay, well, that's the last item we have for a study session here tonight. And so I think I'll go ahead and close the special five-thirty meeting and we will re-adjourn at seven PM. I mean, reopen at seven PM with a regular meeting. Thank you all very much for being here.